I would like to go ahead and call to order the regular city council meeting of November 1st, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilman Warner.
Here.
Councilwoman Martinez.
Present.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lingowski.
Present.
Mayor O'Connor.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Please stand if you're able and join me for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Seated, please. Do we have any additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda? If not, may I have my motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Lingowski, seconded by Councilman Warner. Roll call, Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard. Vice Mayor Lingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Absolutely, yes.
Motion carries five zero, thank you.
Right. Let's move on to public comments. This section of the agenda allows for the comments from the public to speak. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes to comment. A public comment card should have been completed and returned to the city clerk. When you are called to speak, please go to the podium and prior to addressing the council, state your name and address for the record. All public comments will be noted and may be your response if necessary. Any follow-up will be handled by staff at a later time. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do, Mayor. Ms. Stormy Bivin, if you'll please go to the podium, state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Welcome.
Hello.
Hi. My name is Stormy Bivin. I live at 16100 Key Biscayne Lane in Westlake in the community of Crestwind.
Welcome.
Thank you. I have some information for the council, the city manager, and the city attorney, and I'd like to give you the handouts.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Bivin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am here today on behalf of the Wellington Garden Club. I brought with me the president of the Wellington Garden Club, Carol Ralph. I am a longstanding member of the garden club for more than 20 years, and I've been residing in Westlake for three years. And I know we have wonderful things in the plans for our community. On behalf of Wellington Garden Club, we are here today with an idea and proposal for a Blue Star Memorial Marker to be located at the new Westlake Civic Park that is being planned on the west side of Seminole Pratt Whitney across from Christ Fellowship Church. The National Garden Club of which, let me give you a little bit of the hierarchy. Wellington Garden Club is a federated club, part of the Florida Federation of Garden Clubs. That is part of National Garden Clubs. NGC has a program to honor our veterans, our men and women who have served our country. And they have Blue Star and Gold Star Memorial Markers. That is the brochure that I've given you all that you can look at later on. Inside, you'll see the highlighted website, which gives you all of the information that you want to know. Initially, this program began in 1945 to honor the men and women serving in the armed forces during World War II. It has now generally evolved to a tribute to the armed forces who have defended the United States of America, all of our service personnel. Our Board of Directors, Wellington Garden Club, has already approved the funding of this expenditure. We will bear the cost. It is currently $2,350 for this memorial marker. We will cover 100% of the purchase cost for the marker. We will put it in our budget for the 25, 26 year. I am curious what the timing, the possible estimated completion of this park is. Do you have a ballpark?
Not for the completion of the park itself, but we should have a green space available for use. I'm hoping by July 4th. Is that the case, Mr. Castle?
That was promised. Contractor's working on it. We're trying to push him along as fast as possible.
With any luck, by July 4th, we should be able to host our Fourth Fest in that park. But it'll just be a green space, you know? It's not, everything won't be done, but that's phase one.
Well, probably as the planning goes along at a later date, that would be when you all would.
Understood.
You know, choose the spacing in the park for a memorial like this. If in fact, you want to embrace this idea.
So.
From your neighboring garden club.
Um, I'll just, let's just open for discussion real quick. I personally, I, I love the idea. The park itself, if I'm not mistaken, is going to be under the Seminole Improvement District's jurisdiction. So they have to be on board as well. But I'm, you know, I'm absolutely willing to talk about it at the next, the next workshop that we have. We have these joint workshops. I think it's a great idea. Anything we can do to honor our veterans, I'm 1,000% on board. And I think I can potentially convince Sid to be on board as well. But I love the idea. What do you guys think?
Well, I made a recommendation for a veterans memorial area where our flags will be, and that can be, this will be a great spot for that.
That would be ideal. Currently, in Wellington, the garden club has funded and installed, with their help, of course, both a Blue Star Memorial Marker and a Gold Star. The Gold Star is for the families.
Amazing.
Of the servicemen. So we would be looking to the city or to Sid to actually do the installation, whatever that means, preparation of the site, to do some minimal landscaping, perhaps around the base of it with some red, white, and blue flowers.
I think we could make it very tasteful.
Okay.
I like the idea.
And we would love to give you our opinion about what could be planted there. We'd love to be included in that.
Absolutely.
And then we would also be looking for you, the city or Sid for perpetual maintenance of the site. So we'll, we'll, you know, belly up to the bar to buy it, the shipping, all of that.
If my colleagues agree, I'd like to direct staff to bring it forward to Seminole Improvement and start that conversation.
I agree.
Yes.
Agreed.
And we can.
100% behind it.
Excellent.
Thank you. In your packet is a photo of the installations in Wellington's Veterans Park. One was, the blue marker was installed in 2019, gold in '21. And if you have an occasion to go over there, it's at Forest Hills and South Shore Boulevard. Check it out.
Thank you so very much for bringing this forward. I think it's an incredible idea.
Thank you. Shell, so moving forward, is there an agenda item?
Uh, I don't know if the next Sid, Sid workshop is on the books yet, but we will definitely let you know when that's.
So this is on the workshop, and we'll look at a location. And I, we have some final details we have to do on the planning of the park locations anyway for the original proposed veterans area.
But I'm expecting staff to get this Sid almost immediately for their next meeting.
Okay.
So at least.
The contact information is at the bottom of the sheet, so.
Got it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so kindly.
Appreciate it.
We have any more public comment?
Yes, Mayor, you have Mr. Bobby Farber.
Bobby Farber, 48, 29, St. Armans Way in Crestwind. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, ladies. I'm going to do a little follow-up as we had last month with our marquees. We did a little bit more looking. South side is now purple instead of white. North side has no light. I have a picture here of the lovely landscaping, as Ms. Bivin would have liked for hers, that we have no standard for in our marquees, most of them throughout Westlake. I, I don't know if there's a standard for them. I can pass this around that, um, you know, they should be lit, landscaped, everything.
Agreed.
Um, I'm looking at the three-minute thing, and that's freaking me out, but it's all good. Um.
It, it, just for the record, they're not supposed to be purple. It's supposed to be pink for, for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. That's the closest to pink that they could get.
So that makes sense, but the north side is still out. Sid, I don't know what they're thinking as far as the landscaping goes when we look at some of the other stuff that's over there, and that's our side. That's a Westlake sign. We set the standard.
Agreed.
We're not doing it. So I know that Ken was going to speak with Sid. Let's keep that going, and we could get that done. Now, I've also become a streetlight nut because that's what I did. And Ted had asked that we go out and look at some of these streetlights, so I rode around. And I went to go out and I put in job tickets on them to find out that they have a 40-day turnaround, which is utterly ridiculous. When I did it in New York City, you had two, two-hour calls, 12-hour, 48. They had to be addressed, done deal. I also had found out, I know who the manufacturer is. I know the light that we're using. I know what we pay for those lights per light, according to them. I contacted the manufacturer as far as the purple goes. That problem was corrected in 2019. So I don't know what that says about what's going on here. I drove by the Town Parkway Roundabout. It's black. There's uplighting throughout the whole thing. I, I know one person hit it already. I can't believe the rest aren't just smashing into it. This is a crime issue. This is a safety issue. Lights are out everywhere in the developments all over, and I couldn't even put in job tickets on some because FPL didn't even put the poll numbers on.
Wow.
65, 70% of them don't even have numbers.
Correct.
So I couldn't even put it in because the, um, the addresses are very ambiguous. I mean, you could put it in, and their whole system is convoluted. I also found an interesting thing here as when purchasing from them what their service is on. And basically, they kind of tell you that they will service it if, in a nutshell, somebody pulls it in. Um, I'm not going to be the police to run around and get it.
Of course.
In New York, we have patrol routes, and as a city here, I don't know if it's, and it's not going to be every day, once a month.
Could, could you provide, and I apologize to interrupt, but we have to keep the moving, the, the meeting moving. Can you provide, you said you put job tickets in. Could you provide me with the poll numbers that you wrote them down?
I have screenshots of them, and I have.
I'll give you my email.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, that's not necessary.
Okay.
Aldo has done a complete survey of the entire city. There is a GIS layer that shows which ones are purple, which ones are out, which ones are purple, which ones are day burners. That's been given over to FPL for service on all of them. And we will be maintaining that now that we have the streetlight layer within the GIS. All he has to do is go back and change the color of it, and we turn it into FPL for repair.
Can you, in that case, Mr. City Manager, can you also copy me on that?
Sure.
Because I have a different outlet than you have in terms of speaking with FPL now. And, you know, I'd like to apply extra pressure.
We can do that.
Okay. And moving forward, is there going to be some type of protocol for them to constantly monitor this?
Yes, Sid will monitor this.
Sid, so we're going to put somebody else doing patrol.
Yep.
There you go.
Got it. Thank you so much for your time, sir. Appreciate you.
A question. If, if there is a system that identifies which ones are out, which ones are purple, why is it taking this effort here, and why isn't it being done?
There wasn't the system. There is now.
The system still requires someone to manually go out and visually inspect that.
It's not automatic. Apparently Sid has.
Correct. We have, we have put it into our GIS, Sid has put it into the GIS system so that now we have a map of all the streetlights within the city limits that Sid is responsible for. We do not have a map of the streetlights within the communities. Those are all responsibility of the HOA directly with FPL.
And I want everybody to take into consideration, I know this has been a long-going, a long-going issue, but let's just consider that, that at least right now, FPL's resources are being deployed in other areas of the state that are very, very necessary for those efforts to be. So let's just, for a little while, cut them a little bit of slack.
Well, I mean, not any slack. I'm just asking why, so it's a new system that's now in place, is what City Manager is saying. Is that correct?
A monitoring.
That is correct.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Uh, any more comments, Madam Clerk?
No, Mayor, no additional comments.
Fantastic. We have some proclamations. First being Veterans Day, brought forth by Vice Mayor Greg Lingowski. I will be honored to read this proclamation. Whereas our veterans represent the very best of America, the contributions and sacrifices of men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining our freedoms and way of life. And whereas tens of millions of Americans have served in the armed forces of the United States during the past century, and whereas the freedoms we enjoy as Americans do not come without a price, our nation's veterans have sacrificed to preserve and protect our country and constitution from all enemies, foreign and domestic. And whereas hundreds of thousands of Americans have given their lives while serving in the armed forces during the past century, and whereas our veterans understand the important task before the American servicemen and women now keeping watch, and whereas our veterans are brave and selfless individuals who, when duty called, willingly put themselves in harm's way to defend the lives and liberty of others. And whereas their abiding patriotism and enduring devotion to the ideas on which the United States is founded can never fail to inspire us. Now, therefore, on behalf of the city council and the people of the city of Westlake, I, John Paul O'Connor, Mayor of the city of Westlake, by virtue of the authority vested in me, honor the contributions of our veterans to the principles of democracy, individual freedom, and human rights. And further, we are sincerely grateful for the service and sacrifice of all veterans. I call upon the residents of the city of Westlake to join me in honoring the contributions of our veterans to the principles of democracy, individual freedom, and human rights. We love our veterans, don't you, Vice Mayor, for bringing forward that proclamation? Next, we have before us Proclamation 2024 Palm Beach County Fire Rescue 40th Anniversary, also sponsored by our Vice Mayor, which I will now read into the record. We will all stand and present this proclamation to the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue. All right. Want to get a read it first?
Yeah.
All right.
Can I read it first? Can I?
Stand there.
All right. This is a proclamation to, to honor the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue's 40th Anniversary. Whereas the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue is the prime example of public service and sacrifice, displaying the nobility to protect the citizens of our community every day. And whereas the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue provides services, including fire protection, medical, emergency medical services, ALS, BLS, transport, hazardous material mitigation, special operations, aircraft firefighting, 911 dispatching, public education, inspections, investigations, plan review, community assistance, mobile integrated health. And whereas the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue serves 960,669, which is the PBCFR jurisdiction, plus an additional 361,700,000 dispatched covering over 1,769 square land miles, which protects 19 municipalities in unincorporated Palm Beach County. And whereas the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue members are highly dedicated and trained individuals who demonstrate dignity and hope to citizens, the ultimate standard of character and courage in the face of danger. And whereas the city of Westlake, Florida commemorates the 40th anniversary of Palm Beach County Fire Rescue with appreciation for its vital role as a provider of excellence, who by faithful and dedicated service to their community are safeguarding the lives and property of their fellow Americans. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Westlake does hereby recognize the 40th anniversary of Palm Beach County Fire Rescue and encourage all residents to help celebrate the. Palm Beach County Fire Rescue has played in our county and our civic history. On behalf of our community, we honor the men and women who bravely served our citizens in the past and those who continue to uphold that legacy of service today. So I'll stand.
Thank you for the information. She's wanting to hear.
Hi. Very. Thank you. I'm stage here. Well, our vibe, I guess, thank you so much. Yes. Thank you very, thank you very, very much. Having such a pleasure. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Pleasure. Zach, this. Where?
Just going to turn this right here.
Yeah.
Mayor, so you know, October 5th of last month, the fire department held their 40th anniversary celebration, and I was there to represent the city of Westlake.
Fantastic.
Great.
Excellent. All right. We have before us the topic of Westlake Magazine, and I believe there's a presentation from Barry Manning regarding the possibility of Westlake Magazine.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, City Manager, Mr. City Attorney. They're, they sent.
No, I could just have you use the microphone, only because we're battling.
I just need to know if I'm also limited to three minutes. If I am, I can continue.
Just make your presentation, and we'll, we'll play it by ear.
It's better to be telling.
Just kidding. We'll make it two minutes, though.
If you can get it down to a minute and a half. Uh, as a matter, as a matter of fact, Mr. Castle.
Your name, sir, for the record.
So I name an address for the.
Oh, my name is Barry Manning. I was going to get to that later.
An address for the record, please.
Uh, my office is in Wellington. My home is.
Any, just pick an address. We just need an address for the record.
Uh, 1004 Allen Manor Drive.
Excellent. What can we do for you today, sir?
I would like to announce that we're planning on launching a new magazine called Westlake, the magazine. And our plan is to launch it during the month of January that's coming here. Those of you who don't know anything about me, we've been publishing a newspaper in the Western communities, including Westlake, since 1980. The name of the newspaper is The Town Crya. I hope you're all familiar with it.
Of course.
If it isn't, we'll get you a copy. We publish a magazine called Wellington, the magazine, launched in 2004. And we publish a magazine in Royal Palm Beach, Royal Palm, the magazine, which launched in 2020. One. And when Stormy Bivin's got up to speak, I was saying, well, that's the Wellington Garden Club. They were on our third issue front cover, 2004. And I turned to Josh, can, can I introduce the rest of my team?
Sorry.
Josh Manning, he's our executive editor. Freddie Boobel, our distribution coordinator and governor of the area, who will be publisher of this magazine. She's already publisher of Wellington, the magazine, and Royal Palm, the magazine. I, I love the garden club. Having the privilege of following Stormy up to the microphone. Also, by the way, that said, he's from New York. A lot of people think that I'm from New York because of that, you know, that kind of accent.
Okay, Westlake Magazine, let's pay on.
I am not from New York, I'm from Brooklyn.
Fair enough.
Okay. Westlake, the magazine, is going to have features, meaningful material about Westlake, focused on Westlake. It's going to be a city magazine, and one that not only will you enjoy reading, you can be proud of also. In Wellington, we're very well-respected. Wait, is, is that true?
What's that?
In Wellington, I'm well-respected. See that?
That's amazing.
I'll give it to you later. And in Royal Palm Beach, we're well-respected also. It's different from newspaper. You're familiar with how we present our newspaper?
Sure.
Okay. In the magazine, primarily features, and a lot of pictures, and activities, and as much as we can, directed specifically to the city of Westlake. And unlike our previous magazines, this launch is going to be special. We're going to mail it into every home.
Wow.
We've already made the arrangements to get the mailing list that will reach every home in the city of Westlake. There'll be more than just that being printed. There'll also be some bulk drops around the city of Westlake on the outer circumference.
Sure.
Into the acreage and other communities. Basically, the focus will be Westlake and good things that are happening here. We hope that you'll welcome us. We hope to earn your respect. And I brought some business cards with me. I can find them. My pockets are stuffed. There they are. This is Wellington, the magazine.
That's okay. Wow. Mr. Manning, thank you.
There's a reason why I'm giving this to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Dan.
Yeah.
This one isn't the magazine, but I'm understanding the suggestion.
Okay.
The reason I'm giving you the card is it has my cell number on it. I want to make sure that you know that if you have a question, a concern, an idea, anything that you think might be appropriate for the magazine that you'd like to see, we're always willing to take a look. Don't get me wrong, I'm really good at saying no. If I don't think it's appropriate, or if it doesn't fit. But I promise you, if it's appropriate, and it fits, and it's worth it that the people in Westlake will enjoy reading, hold me.
Thank you so much, Mr. Manning. I'm, I'm very much looking forward to seeing what you guys bring to the table. This is great.
Thank you for. Thank you for inviting me here this evening.
Thank you so much. Look at that, a very own magazine. This section of the agenda consists of routine or administrative items that require final approval by the city council and may be approved in its entirety by a single motion. There'll be no discussion of these items unless a council member asks for one, asks for one, at which point we'll take it off the consent agenda and we'll move it to the regular agenda. And it will be considered on a few, as a future item. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Lingowski, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Councilwoman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. This is quasi judicial. We have before us SPM 2024-6. The applicant is requesting approval for parcel B within shops of Westlake Landings, Commercial Plaza. City Attorney swear in any witnesses that will provide testimony.
Yes, sir. All those individuals could testify. Please stand and raise your right hand. Sadly swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Please proceed.
Let's go ahead and disclose any ex parte communication as well.
None.
None. I have only with city staff. I don't know if that's ex parte or not.
No, sir.
Okay. Presentation, please.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. For the record, I'm Neil Leon, City Planner for the city of Westlake. Before you is SPM 2024-06. Site plan modification for the shops of Westlake Landings, parcel B. Okay. Parcel B is located on the east side of the shops of Westlake Landings, west of Seminole Prep Whitney Road. Next slide, please. Again, this is the general location. It has a future line use of downtown mixed use and a zoning district of mixed use. More specifically, shown on the slide, parcel B located within the shops of Westlake Landings. Some background, parcel B is within the Westlake Landings. It's a master site plan. Commercial Plaza located west of Seminole Prep Whitney, the box, it may 50 acres. That was originally approved by council in June 14, 2021. On November 22, 2021, the council approved parcel B site plan for mixed retail uses to be located within two proposed buildings. On June 6, 2023, the city council approved a master site plan modification to replace the previously approved restaurant use with a bank with drive-through on the north building, southern portion. And on March 5, 2024, council approved a bank totaling 2,572 square feet with drive-through from the south end, south end of north building with 2,572 square feet fast food restaurant use with drive-through, including 400 square foot of outdoor seating area. As shown on the slide, this is the approved site plan with a list of the tenants on north and south building. Also, on the circles, it's the, all the paper walkway, walkways throughout the site. The applicant proposes to replace the brick paper crosswalks with crosswalk stripings, add a landscape island along the east elevation of the north building, remove one parking space, add two pickup-only parking spaces for the Chipotle takeout restaurant, and update the parking data. And also changes to the facade of building. More specifically, corrugated metal panel on the top corner on the southeast of the facade of the south building only. Shown is some existing other sites throughout the city. As you can see, most of them have, not all of them have paper crosswalks throughout all the developments. The applicant proposes to, this is already existing, striping instead of the paper crosswalks as shown on the pictures. And this is the approved elevation of the south building where you see the corrugated on the corner. And the proposal is to do a stucco, add a mechanical equipment closet on the west corner elevation of the building. The site still makes the mixed zoning district land development regulations. It's not been impacted. And also the safe, fire safety, landscape, drainage and traffic is not being impacted by this request. On July 24, staff performed a site inspection for the final zoning sign-off requested by the contractor, the shops of Westlake Landings for parcels B and C. In a letter sent to the applicant, staff listed multiple items that were inconsistent with the council approved site plan, including the missing brick pavers crosswalks. Later, staff issued a comment later dated September 27 advising the applicant to reconsider keeping the pavers as approved. The pavers were approved by council because Westlake places a strong emphasis on aesthetics and the proposed drives are not consistent with the Westlake development as existing. Based upon the facts and findings, the application meets all of the required for the zoning code regulations. This is just the response of the two letters, the applicant's response on the inspection results. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have an applicant presentation?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. For the record, Donaldson hearing tonight on behalf of EKC, Westlake LLC, the developer of the shopping center, parcel B and parcel C, which is on the agenda next, Mr. Bob Bedard and Pat Christie, who have been intimate, intimate to delivering this new commercial.
Sir, could you speak in the microphone?
With, to Westlake is here this evening and certainly can answer any questions. You know, just in the interest of time and knowing that this is a Friday night, I'm not gonna go through another whole presentation again. Staff went through the items that we're proposing. We are asking to not be required to put in brick paper crosswalks. And it's, you know, it's during the construction and the permitting, somehow the engineering permits were issued and did not have the crosswalks on it. As staff pointed out, they're not a requirement of the code. It was something that was just volunteered by the applicant in the beginning. And so they were constructed without the crosswalks. And so going in at this point with all of the other heavy cost overruns with the cost of construction and delays that we've had with the construction industry just for a little bit of a burden. So we're asking for your consideration. The request also includes the addition of a, of an additional landscape island in the front of the building, which we elected to keep as opposed to remove. It provides more green space. There's a big royal palm in it, so it creates a nicer, nicer aesthetic. We're adding two pickup spaces for Chipotle, which we're hopeful to have open here pretty soon. Those spaces are not required parking spaces. So they, when we do add a reserve space, it comes out of the pool, so we have excess parking. And basically, the way that Chipotle's pickup work gets done online through an app, and you know when your order's ready, then you go through the drive-through. And this enables somebody to come through and park, and somebody can bring it out to them. And that's communicated through the app and in the drive-throughs. We need just two of those spaces in the front. Also, as staff pointed out, a portion of the building elevation changed. When we originally came in, BurgerFi was one of our signature tenants. And so there was a corrugated metal that was utilized on the elevation, which is part of the BurgerFi branding. BurgerFi is back in many, many markets, as you probably are well aware. And so that's done now just in a nice, smooth stucco. Lastly, in working with your, your fire department and providing for emergency services, we have to plan these days for what we call additional frequency, what they call a BDA transformer. And so a closet was put in for BDA equipment, and it needs to be inside, and that was added to the rear of the building. And so that's it. We're, we're excited. We're, several tenants are open now. Habit Burgers open, and I understand doing very, very well. Chipotle, Orange Theory, Artland Dental, and Three Natives. We're hoping that they will all be open and doing business here in Westlake in first part of 2025, if not, if not sooner. So great suite of tenants that have been hand-selected. And so if you have any additional questions, be more than happy to have Mr. Bedard or Mr. Christie come up and address you.
I, I have a few. Explain to me again, because perhaps I missed it.
Sir, perhaps if you could open for public comments in the.
Open comments before I have, we have a discussion? Because I feel like the discussion would answer a lot of the public comments.
Well, procedures.
Okay, let's open up for public comment.
It's up to you.
Yeah, let's, that's, let's, let's open up for public comment. If there is any.
Mayor, I had no public comment cards.
Okay, let's close public comment. And now let's have the discussion. Okay, so the site plan was presented with these paper crosswalks. Remind me how they got, how it got built without the pavers?
When the, when the engineering plans, which of which you build a parking lot from, were permitted, they failed to show.
Who's they?
The engineering plans are prepared by the applicant. So the applicant's engineering plans that were submitted to the building department were permitted without the decorative crosswalks there. And so, and it wasn't realized by the, by the applicant that, that the crosswalks were a requirement because it's on the site plan and it wasn't on the engineering plan until well after it was constructed. So that's, that's the, that's the conflict. And there's no.
Understood. Thank you.
It's a.
City manager, do.
Yes, sir.
Do we not have a process in place that confirms that what's submitted and what's permitted by engineering equals what this body approved as a site plan?
Evidently, when it's submitted, the site plan has not been typically submitted with the engineering plans. We've made a change to that. The site plan is now required to come in with the engineering plans. So that when the engineering department reviews it, they know that the site, what was approved by the site plan, and they make sure the engineering plans match.
So moving forward, there's no chance of issuing that permit. If she was presented, it's different than what was originally approved. Because that's insanity to me, first of all.
There's one question on that line. Can anyone come in with an engineering plan and get it approved? Mr. City Manager?
When you say.
Let's say someone doesn't come to the city council for a land use approval or an entitlement. You just submit a plan to, to your engineering department for approval?
No, it would have to come if it, if it does anything to the site plan. Correct me if I'm wrong, Suzanne, but anything that comes.
So when the engineering.
Has to come through a site plan approval.
Okay.
The actual engineering, the design, the actual documents to build it do not have to come back to the council. It's the site plan. The technical data goes straight to the building department and the engineering department.
But they, I can't hear everything you're saying because of the background noise. But where I want to get to is someone comes in with an engineering plan to the city counter. There must be something provided on that engineering plan showing that the city council has approved the site plan.
Suzanne.
Suzanne Dombrowski, city engineer. So when an applicant comes in with an engineering plan, say it's a parking lot, a building, we cannot approve anything unless there is a site plan in place for that or a historical record of a site plan. For example, the Wind Dixie had a site plan approved by the county before we were incorporated. So we cannot issue them a permit to start building anything unless there is a site plan in place.
So you, you first confirmed that it was approved, site planned by the city council? And do you have the plan in front of you at the time?
We do, and I have been going through the records to see how this occurred, this discrepancy. And, you know, I don't want to get into a lot of details, but when we review these plans, each plan focuses on a particular component. If you have a utility plan, all of the utility things are bold. Everything else is kind of gray just in the background. And what happened is all these crosswalks were gray, so it's indicating that it's shown in a different plan. And so it wasn't like the focus of the review. Honestly, that's how it, that discrepancy got through on that land development permit. So it should be consistent with the site plan.
Right, I understand that they're gray. Oftentimes, they have a notation on it indicating certain type of paver versus striping or painting or just bare pavement. It is, it appears that there wasn't oversight.
That notation was not in the engineering permit plans that were used to build the site. That notation was in the site plan package that was not used to build the site.
So it was overlooked at, at your department level?
It was something that should have been picked up. I understand why it wasn't. It was an excuse not to be, but.
Right, okay. And is there a remedy to make sure this doesn't happen again?
Yeah, like Mr. Castle said, we're gonna be having the site plans included with the engineering package because we've got our record of what's been approved by the council. We want to make sure the applicant has the same record of what's been approved by the council so that we're all working off the same document. And that's included with each engineering permit application now. Yes, yep. And then any revisions, we have to make sure that those are all up to date with the engineering package.
And just to make it clear, the permit that you issue doesn't say anything about pavers in the crosswalk. It's the plan that the developer's designer submitted.
Correct, yes.
So the first oversight occurred at that level?
Correct.
At the, the engineering plan that the applicant submitted.
Right, the first, the first failure was the applicant's. And then it was our failure to issue a permit based on that. That being said, you know, I, I understand that there's certainly some culpability here by the city, but I'm inclined to deny the request. You know, I, I understand this is a, a cost engineering issue, but a couple, couple items here. One, the overall aesthetics of the entire city. We want everything to match. If we don't do pavers here, this will be the one area where there isn't pavers in the crosswalk. And I'm looking at the overall picture. And I also don't want to set the precedent that you can present something to this body and then build whatever you want. Whether it was an oversight or not, I understand it was. I'm not saying it wasn't with utmost respect. It certainly was an oversight, but it's a terrible precedent to set. That's my opinion. I'll let this, my colleagues deliberate. But I, I would approve everything else except for the crosswalks. I think they need to be, they need to match the rest of the city. Yes, sir. Please, uh, please state your name and address for the record. I'll, I'll allow this a hundred percent.
I, I work for the developer. I'm the one who is constructing this.
Need your name and address for the record.
Patrick Christie. I live at 3650 Southeast even avenue.
Thank you.
I come a long way. I respect your position, sir. I really do. This issue was not brought to our attention until we were going in for our final inspections. With all due respect, we do have a hodgepodge here in Westlake of different materials, different crosswalks all over the city. Your public center has striped crosswalks in front of the building. And there is stamped concrete only on a pedestrian pathway out around the perimeter. The Wind Dixie Center that was completely redone is all striped crosswalks. You have colored concrete over at the new 711 at, on the east side of Seminole Prep Whitney. And you have a combination of pavers and striped crosswalks at the 711 right next to it. What I'm asking is if there is some way we can maybe do a partial, maybe a pathway, maybe at the entries, instead of all of the crosswalks going through as kind of a shared.
Let's, let's put it up on the map. Let's take a look at that concept. If we can put it up with a whoever has a presentation, if we could, if we. a, whoever has a presentation, if we could, if we could put it up, and let's take a look at that right now. Feel free to get up and dance to the music.
That's great, actually.
Yep.
This one, yeah, here.
I mean, Grove Plaza predated the city, so. Right, the one with all the little circles.
Page, page seventy-six in your, in your book, and also page
Just in stamped concrete?
We, to do pavers.
I, I want pavers.
Yes.
But let's pull it up. Yeah, I just want
Yeah, there's a good example of, of colored stamped concrete right there.
Okay, this will work.
Talk about the next one as well at the same time.
That'd be a separate petition. What we would, what I would recommend from a professional perspective is to kind of keep the same theme as what they had done at the Publix. So the main sidewalk that comes off the multimodal path, which is up on the north end, right below where it says parcel B.
Right.
Those should be pavers. And then, and then the crosswalk extending into 711 to the north should be pavers. And then all the way down on the south end, the crosswalk at the main entrance, when you come in off of the roadway, just right off of Landings Drive, the southern crosswalk right, right there. I, I think, I think if all three of those crosswalks, the total, be a total four crosswalks.
You're talking about the top three?
Yeah, the top three and the bottom, the bottom one right
And the bottom two?
That one right there.
That one there?
Those, those, those would be the ones that we, man, would field here.
Down, they would be what?
These three.
The, this one?
Sir, no, you gotta speak in the mic.
Here. Top.
Yep. Are you saying, what's the logic behind not doing these two in between the buildings? Just cost engineering?
Just to do those now, sir, with all of the traffic out there is going, it's going to be difficult to do all of these going forward, but.
Behind the building, I'm less concerned about. I'll be honest and candid about it. Especially because I don't foresee many pedestrians back there. I agree with you on the top.
Wait, what, what do you agree to?
That the top should be done. Oh, not pavers. I agree with you. Go back. Yep, so I agree with you on the top.
What about, what do I agree with you here?
I
That's the back here.
Yeah, these are at the back of the building. I don't see a lot of pedestrians there, and I'm okay admitting those personally. If you're saying that to tear up this concrete and install pavers is going to create a safety issue, then I would be inclined to agree with you.
It will.
Yeah.
Then we have to leave that just as a safety reason. But if we can get the rest of it done, I would be opposed, you know, what we just, what I just spoke about. I would be inclined to, to come to that compromise.
All right, can I verify a little bit? It's a little bit hard to hear. So top three, we're saying keep the top three?
Make them, make those two.
Keep the top two, right?
And the bottom.
And the bottom one?
Yeah.
The top left exit, where does that exit to?
The back of the building. That's the back, behind the building.
Now, where's So that, I'm, I'm looking at it as a way of every entrance into this plaza, you would cross over pavers. If we got rid of the one that goes to Tractor Supply, that leaves an entrance that is unpaved if we want to keep some type of uniformity. So if we kept those four and got rid of the center ones, you can't go into this plaza without crossing pavers. It's uniform, is how I look at it. Just giving my opinion.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'd agree with that. There's good logic in that way.
That way
By all the connected pathways
Yep.
Offsite to the public network are all with the board.
Wait, by work. We're establishing precedent here. So we're not talking about just this project. We're talking about everything coming after this project.
No, we're just speaking specifically of this project.
Yeah, as you said initially, you don't want to set precedent. And that's what we're doing by compromising on this.
Because this was a, this was a unique failure that was also on the city's point, this particular item. Everything coming forward won't have this issue where we issued a permit.
We don't know that.
I mean
Well, this, we didn't expect this one, I think.
No, but it's happened, it's happened before as well with Kentucky Fried Chicken.
Correct, but we didn't have these checks in place at that time. Now we do.
All right. Well, I think we're setting a precedent. If we don't go pavers all the way through, I would recommend we codify that requirement so that we have that assurance. And I, and that's my position.
Well, we're, we're talking about fixing an error now, and I'm not going to tear up pavers in between buildings if I'm being told that there's going to be a safety issue.
It's not a safety issue. They just closed it off for a day. There's a way around it.
We think that this was a good compromise, and it's consistent with the methodology and the thought process that was implemented at Publix. So every crosswalk at Publix is not pavers. And as, as you know, it's, it's not required by the code. We, the issue that it didn't happen and it was, you approved it, you know, that's our matter.
Well, and I'm also looking at Westlake Landing as it's, as a single overall project.
Yes, major connections would now all be provided.
What's, uh, we know Mr. Warner's, Councilman Warner's opinion. Let's go ahead and, and each speak on it. Councilwoman?
I think the fact that Publix does not have the consistency, that I would be in agreement with us doing the pavers at each entrance, because why would we require that of one? And it is not the standard we've already set when we approve the Publix or Publix was fixed. So I'm in agreement with the compromise for each entrance to have pavers.
Thank you.
I'm in agreement with that. I mean, I understand the point with, with the Habit Burger drive-through. That would be more enough. That means it's a loss of business for them because that's going to be ripped up for coming up today. So that's going to be. But yes, the main entrances to this facility or the parking area, definitely, I agree.
And the one in the back that was referenced by
That goes in between.
But the, I will say, driving through Habit Burger ones, I did notice there's, there actually is a crosswalk. You just kind of like drive, but somebody was walking from, you know, Starbucks. I don't know. I've seen people just blow right through it, not looking.
Can I just ask one question? Are they raised pavers? That was one of the questions I wrote down. To slow traffic or was it just decorative?
It, it, it's just decorative. It's not, it's not raised, but there's, there's a texture change when you drive over it too, which is a part of why we do it.
Yeah. Is there something that could be done in between the buildings that's not quite pavers, but
Ladder striping? Yeah, we, we could do some ladder striping to make that a little bit
A little more pronounced of a crosswalk just because of the safety issue?
The crosswalks are thermoplastic, so we could tear the ladder striping in there as well.
And that would, that would help a lot.
I would like, I would love that.
First, um, what about making those that, if we didn't tear up the two drive-through areas? What if they're painted, that stripe is yellow?
What we just talked about.
That would be, if it's okay with your city engineer, I don't think we would have an objection with yellow versus white.
Yellow, it's brighter, people see it.
But we have white in Publix Plaza?
Without having to rip up those two sections, just make
That is a problem to be yellow. That doesn't follow
Yeah.
traffic codes. It's supposed to be white.
But it can be the striped white?
It's not, it's not warranted for this application to have the, they call it zebra crossings, so therefore, they call them higher visibility, more, more prominent intersections. It's really not warranted for this type of shopping center.
Okay.
The two solid 12-inch stripes are what you would typically see.
My engineer says it's not warranted.
Okay, that's fine. And then my other question, currently, on the drive-through entrance coming into it, is there the two yellow plates that are for rail?
Yes, so those are required whether you have pavers or not. That's an ADA requirement for line that they get into.
While the engineer is up there, do you have a standard specification for paved, the crosswalks, paver crosswalks?
We do not have a standard. When the applicant provides something, we do look at it to make sure that they're traffic-rated bricks. You can get some bricks that are only meant for pedestrian sidewalks, some that are meant for vehicles.
Because throughout the, throughout the other parts of the city, you have a border of one color, and the crosswalk portion is a different color.
So we don't have a standard that says they have to do it that way. The standard is that you definitely have to have an, a color differential, whether it's a stripe or a paver that makes that color differential. That's what's important from a visibility perspective. But there is no standard on whether it has to be the brick or the stripe.
So on this one, do you, are you going to have a standard, or are they going to recommend a standard?
They'll provide a
Match what's existing in the other Westlake landings.
We'll match what, what we've done in Town Center Parkway and the major roadways. We'll just match that same standard and use the same standard Minto colors that we've utilized and specified for the major roads. And it would be a traffic-rated, traffic-rated facility.
Thank you.
And I, and particularly, both of those are, they're like a lighter gray. And so we probably would still have the thermoplastic painted white stripes so that you also have the additional visibility at night with the
Councilman Martinez, what's your opinion on this whole matter?
I said, I like how most of us are agreeing on the olive entrances being paved, the white stripe on the crosswalk, non-zebra, correct? Because that's what our code allows.
And our engineer says it's not necessary for zebra.
Correct. And there is a stop sign as you're going through that drive-through before you get to the crosswalk?
Yeah, there will be a stop sign before every crosswalk. Well, there should be
No, it's on that, I think so.
Plan, I believe there is. That's a separate stripe. That's not even part of the crosswalk striping. That's a separate stripe.
Can you put the map back up so we have a clear understanding of which crosswalks will be paved?
Sure. Let's put the, the circle map back up there if we could. There we go, right there. So we're talking about the top three and the, and the most bottom one.
And then one right back in the, in the back that, that was in Martinez.
Right.
Right.
Top three.
There. And not the ones on the street.
No, all the way up. Let's count them out.
These that connect to the public sidewalk. And all the way out. Right, so there's one, two, three, four. And then the last one would be this here, and all of these would be the, the stripes.
I'm, I think that's a reasonable compromise.
Can I get clarification on that? Because I followed you down, and I didn't see the four.
Did we number them? I mean
There's three on top.
One, two, three, four. So in other words, we're looking, looking at it this way. The intent is you come off the multimodal path, you get all the way back to the public side.
One on the right is, your counting is two.
Yes.
That's two.
That's, that's where, all the way down to the bottom here, again, it's connecting the large multimodal path out to the
So it's, so the crosswalks on the perimeter of the Westlake plan?
Right, connecting, connecting to the offsite pedestrian network.
I do want to clarify, if you say perimeter on that top left circle, we're only talking about the rightmost crosswalk and not the other two.
Just that. You want those other two?
Whatever, these are consistent with all of the other roadways, all with Westlake.
Like those already paved, pavers, it's, it's asphalt.
Straight. Those are, those are at least, right, that, that was done by the master developer.
Right.
And then the remaining ones, the interior ones?
Striped.
Will be the white stripes.
With thermal plastic.
I need a motion.
Move that we approve SPM 2024 dash
Zero six.
Zero six, with the four, five identified exterior areas, and with the interior areas with striping.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilwoman Leonard, seconded by Vice Mayor Langowski. Roll call. Councilwoman Leonard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski?
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Warner?
No.
Councilman Martinez?
Yes.
Motion carries four one.
Thank you. Just a quick note, I don't want to let our staff off the hook here. We cannot allow this to happen. It costs everybody money.
It's been well, it's been well
Not a good thing. And I, and I appreciate the applicant. You know, I know, you know, two wrongs don't make a right, but thank you for coming to a compromise. But staff's not off the hook. Let's move forward with SPM 2024 dash zero five. The applicant is requesting approval for parcel C within Shops of Westlake Landings Commercial Plaza. City Attorney, please swear in any witnesses.
All those individuals going to testify during the course of this proceeding, please stand, raise your right hand, be sworn to solemn, swear to tell the whole truth, not about the truth. Please proceed.
Disclose any ex parte communication, Collins? Any? No? We have none.
Austin Neil? Please, sir. For the record, I'm the owner of the town for the city of Westlake. Before you use SPM 2024 dash zero five, Shops of Westlake Landings, parcel C, site plan modification. I'll with this kick. Next slide.
Yes.
Thank you. General location, again, this is the Shops of Westlake Landings. The site plan modification is to replace all previously approved preparators crosswalks with crosswalk striping in parcel C. Parcel C is constructed with three drive-through restaurants. Again, general location where parcel C is located within the Shops of Westlake Landings. Background, on November 22, 2021, parcel C was approved with three fast food restaurants on March 30, 2023. The applicant received approval for a minor site plan modification to remove a second drive-through lane. November 2, 2023, the applicant received approval for a minor site plan modification to remove two dual-level charging stations. And on April 2, 2024, the applicant received approval for a site plan modification to increase the building area by 238 square, square feet, removal of outdoor seating area, and removal of second drive-through lanes. Parcel C has not yet received a certificate of completion from the city due to inconsistencies with the approved site plan, and specifically the paver crosswalks. But now installs approved. The applicant again proposes to amend this site plan by providing crosswalk stripings. And yellow circles is all the locations where the, you'll see the crosswalks with pavers. Next slide. And this is the black and white site plan, showing all the crosswalks. Again, this is other sites with the paper crosswalks installed. And this is the, the existing constructed site with the striping crosswalks. Again, no fire safety landscape or drainage traffic has been impacted for this request. And just to reiterate again about the inspections that site performed in July 24, where this was first brought up, and then the staff issued a comment letter reiterating to, for the applicant to provide the paper crosswalks. And again, this application does meet all of the zoning code requirements as stated.
Thank you, Austin Neil.
Thank you.
Um, let's jump to the compromise, if we could, by the applicant.
Well, we have a precedent already set, right?
Well, that's, let's see, let's see the proposition here. Yeah, before we have to relitigate this whole thing.
Don't keep up the colored picture.
Yeah. Back, yeah, you go.
Great. So what, what we would suggest, taking the same methodology, the one at the entrance, the one here at the, at the, at the first cross, one down here with this major connection to the multimodal path. Now, those are the ones we'd like to not do, the ones in these that go through the drive-throughs. The only other ones that would be of discussion would be these two right here.
I would, I personally would like to see those since it's a consistent sidewalk.
Those are, those are in the drive aisle that crosses.
Right.
I guess that, that would be consistent with the theme here, 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 and, and there.
So any questions from my colleagues?
Let's make a comment to throw out. Everything on the east, everything on the east side needs to be done. And the two sides, you know, the two drive-through areas, I'm fine not doing those, just striping them.
Quite what he said.
Okay, so. Okay, so. So one, two here?
Yes.
Exactly.
Yes, yes, yes.
Two. This one right here.
Three, yep.
And then these two right there. So one, two, three.
I'm also saying the middle too.
Are you?
I'm also saying the middle between Starbucks and KFC.
The middle here and here, but not in the drive-thru?
That whole section.
Including the drive-thru?
Yes. That's going to, that's going to require shutting down that drive-through lane and the loss of revenue. That's, that's Starbucks.
That's a, that's two lane drive-through?
Blue lane.
Get next down there at the end where everybody comes out.
So our precedent right now is all entrance and not drive-throughs.
Correct.
Uh, planner.
So right now it's Starbucks, it's striped white, correct?
Correct. It's correct.
On the drive-thru. Because I, when I drove yesterday, I did, I checked the other structures, those are striped.
They're all striped.
So I have, I have an engineer question.
They're all striped.
I have a question for the engineer. I, I know you said previously that, this is actually perfect right here. I know you said previously that this type of a crosswalk does, shouldn't require the zebra.
Yes.
My only thought process and logic is, I don't know if you've seen it, but when school lets out, these kids are just going back and forth between Starbucks and KFC and Taco Bell on foot, on bikes, on scooters. Does that change the logic at all considering it's highly, highly trafficked by children?
Not necessarily. It's a lot, it's mostly related to how fast the traffic is going and how much traffic you have vehicular.
Got it. So because they're going from a stop to a drive, it's not necessary to make that brighter and
Just all the vehicle traffic within the law is going slow. You see, typically you see the zebra crossings at intersections when
Got it.
People are going, you know, 45 miles an hour.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, it doesn't hurt
Right.
Anything, it's just not typical.
Yeah, because the city engineer isn't in a, should it Would it hurt the official fairness there?
I, I would love it personally. I think
We got to do everybody to be consistent. You got to go back and do that every
I would be I, I personally wouldn't mind it at all. I would like it just because you got so many kids there. As long as it doesn't hurt the overall aesthetic, I think it could only
Then would you want to go back and do that?
Uh, doing the What they call zebra instead of just the lines in between the fast food restaurants? Because there's so many kids on scooters.
There's a lot of pedestrian traffic there. I, I'm curious from the contractor, how long it, how long it would take to do a crosswalk with pavers?
You have to, excuse me, you have to go out, you have to excavate, compact, put the sand bed in, you got to put the pavers in. Each crosswalk is probably going to take at least a day to do, depending on the curves. And we've got to keep entries open at this point.
I'm just thinking about safety.
Could it be done during the evening hours when there's less traffic?
Yes, it's just a premium cost if I can get the contractor to do it.
So we
We have issues getting this stuff done.
It's not infeasible to do them in pavers.
No, nothing's
Nothing's infeasible.
We've, we've already litigated that issue. Nothing's infeasible, but we're coming to a compromise because the city's also culpable here. We approved, we issued a permit for something that we should never have issued it for. Um, so we are coming to a compromise and we're trying to work with our applicants here.
And I appreciate that.
We're trying to be fair.
I appreciate that.
If you guys are willing to also make them brighter, just as a safety standpoint, less aesthetics, more safety, I, I like that idea.
We can go back in and we could add the, either the ladder striping or the angled striping, which either you prefer in all of the crosswalks.
It's just, just
Ladder, it's more visually
Adam, yeah.
I, I would defer to, to Mr. Herring. This is what he does. Yeah, I mean, I would, I would like it just, just to keep our kids safe, as long as you're not opposed.
We are not opposed.
While I have you up here, and I don't mean to change subjects completely, but in parcel B.
Yes, sir.
What's taking so long for those EV chargers to be, to be available? They're all, they're like roped off with the caution tape right now.
It's FPL. FPL is putting those in.
So we're waiting on them.
So we're waiting on that.
Got it. Sorry, I didn't mean to change tracks. I was just
That's okay. So they, they are just about done. They've been restoring the landscaping. I think the actual connections are just about complete.
Excellent. Okay, so let's, let's land the plane here.
Yep.
If this, if we approve the changes this way and who wants the additional striping there?
Yes, sir.
When do you plan on doing that?
The striping I can do pretty quickly, within a couple of weeks. I just have to get that contracted. The pavers, we're going to have to order those. I believe the city engineer is going to want to see a detail on how we're doing that.
Okay.
That's probably going to take more like six to eight weeks, depending on the schedule to get the pavers in.
Excellent.
My question is, do we need to do the striping then on parcel B?
I think, I don't think we need a whole motion to do it.
Make them consistent.
We'll make, okay.
Or rely on the applicant to just do it.
Be consistent. Okay.
So um, I think, do we all know what we're talking about? Do we need to read?
Austin, can you point
No, I'm not on the same page here.
Or not on the page?
Okay. Nope. So Yeah, we can just go back to the overview with the red circles.
Yeah.
Okay.
But there's, go to the colored, the circled spots, please.
Colored image is very easy.
There we go. All right, can I have someone with a pointer, please?
This one?
Okay, we're saying keep that outside one. I'm asking, I'm asking my counsel, we're saying You want to keep pavers?
Pavers.
Okay.
We're motion of all exits or entrances.
Okay, so
Well, let, let, let Councilman Martinez run through his opinion, so.
Well, I'm, I'm, I want to hear what you guys were proposing. You're saying keep that one with a dot currently. Okay, next.
Yeah.
Keep pavers. And we're saying the entrance to the drive-throughs, we can X those.
That's pavers right there.
Correct.
That's it.
And then the other ones will be high visibility striped.
But they're, they're also showing pavers into each drive-through.
Right, those won't be pavers, will they be high
Okay, so you want to do, right now it's white stripe and you want to add more zebra stripes?
Whatever it is, whatever ladder it's called.
Ladder stripe.
Explain what ladder is.
The ladder stripe basically looks like a ladder, so
Looks
It's just straight.
Sometimes it's, sometimes it's called piano keys.
Piano key? Just looking up a quick
Aesthetic better.
Oh, piano key.
Please pull it up.
Yeah, I got actual piano keys on the crosswalk, not Thanks, Ken. Um, so you're saying if we do that here, then we also want to make it uniform
Correct.
In the other one.
We'll match the other thing. We just don't need a whole But he will match The high visibility
Yes.
And
We will go back in parcel B as well.
What was everyone's opinion on keeping it in between each restaurant? Oh, no, you said that was striped.
That will be the ladder.
That's ladder, okay. So off the crosswalk in from Top Street, West Street, West Street. Man, I think that sounds like a good compromise to me.
Here we go.
Okay.
But straight.
Ladder.
Okay.
Ladder right here.
That's diagonal, but it's
Versus the angle, which is the zebra.
Yeah, it's more like emergency parking type.
So just so everybody can see what I pulled up. Yes. For the, for the public record camera. If you can see the ladder pictures that I pulled up, so. Okay. This is going to fall. Okay. So I believe I am in need of a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve SPM 2024 dash zero five for the site plan modification. All entrances will be the red paper brick and including the intermodal pathway. And every other side crosswalk will be a high visibility ladder.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Langowski, seconded by Councilman Martinez. Roll call, Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
We're diminishing the quality of the aesthetics and I say no.
Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Motion carries four one.
Right. Moving on to item C. Resolution 2024 dash 22, a resolution for the plat of, plat of Oaks of Westlake Phase One. City Attorney, swear in any witnesses that may provide testimony.
All those individuals that testify to resolution 2024 dash 22, please stand and be sworn, be solemn, swear to tell the whole truth, none of the truth.
Okay.
Please proceed.
Let's disclose any ex parte communication. I have none. None. Okay. Do we have a presentation by staff?
Excuse me, hold on, let's clarify. Staff? So you, so city council would accept the staff's recommendation contained in their staff report?
So typically for plats, we don't prepare a presentation. Every, all the information is in the staff report, so I'm available if there's any questions.
Staff recommends approval?
Staff recommends approval, yes.
Okay. Great, thank you, staff.
Respectfully, do you have anything to add since it's been recommended for approval and plats are ministerial anyway?
Just this, just a quick little overview, this is one of our latest communities. We're excited about it. It's called the Oaks, Oaks of Westlake. So this is the companion of what we had done with, with the, the pines, which was parcel V. This is parcel U. Uh, and first phase is going to have 266 homes.
That was going to be my question.
Really, really excited about bringing this, this forward. We want to start land development, so we're ready when the pines is complete. So, but other than that, there were some very minor staff requested kind of clerical changes to the cover sheet of the plat. They're not technical in nature as it relates to distances and bearings. Uh, and so I just would request that your, your motion include the staff memorandum dated November 1st, today's date, 2024. And those could be updated prior to going to, to the recordation. So very, very minor suggestions that staff thought might be better improvements on the plat, which we would agree to do.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Do we have any council comments?
Excuse me, public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Public hearing.
Let's open up for public hearing. Do any comments from the public on this plat?
Mayor, there are no comment cards.
Public hearing is now closed. And let's open up for comments from the council.
Question?
Sure.
Yeah, to Mr. Herring, are, are there a new set of models for this project or the, the ones that already exist?
Same models. Well, the, the plat includes 50-foot series lots and 65-foot series lots. And we'll continue to do the same models that we currently have.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? May I have a motion?
Remove approval of resolution for the plat of Oaks of Westlake Phase One. Resolution number 2024 dash 22.
Second.
Resolution by title only, a resolution, City Council, City of Westlake, Florida, approving the plat of Oaks, Westlake Phase One, being in part of replata of all open space track five and a portion of track A. Pines of Westlake Phase One, Plat Book 136, Pages 3 through 21, inclusive public records, Palm Beach County, Florida. And a portion of sections five and eight, Township 49 South, Range 41 East. City Westlake, Palm Beach County, providing for recordation, provide for conflicts, provide for severability and provide for an effective date. And if the makers of the motion would accept the inclusion of the correspondence referenced in the Presentation by the applicant.
The motion made, so includes.
We have a motion by Councilman Warner, seconded by Councilman Martinez. Roll call, Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. We have before us resolution 2024 dash 23, a resolution for the plat of terraces of Westlake Phase Three. City Attorney, if you could, please swear in any witnesses.
All those individuals that testify, if any, please stand and raise your right hand, be solemn, swear to tell the whole truth, none of the truth. Please proceed.
I have no ex parte. Anyone else on my council?
None, no.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Again, we have no presentation for this plat and we also recommend approval.
Thank you, Engineer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Donaldson Herring for the record here on behalf of Minto PBL HLLC. Uh, and this is a request for an extension or a third phase to the terraces of, of Wesley. That is our latest attached single family, often referred to as a town home product. We're proposing an additional 266 homes. They've been very, very widely accepted by the marketplace, price right, great product delivery. Uh, and so we're really excited to bring that forward. And this will just be an extension of about 22 additional acres to the south, located within parcel I of Wesley. Your, your staff has determined that this application meets the requirements of chapter 177 of the Florida statutes and is technically compliant. And therefore we request your approval.
Thank you. Let's open for, open public hearing and open for public comment, please.
Mayor, there are no comment cards.
Public hearing is now closed. And do we have any comments from the council on this plat?
No.
Uh, can you put the map up there? Mr. Herring, is there an amenity associated with this phase?
No, the, the, there is not a specific amenity associated with this phase. So here's, here's the overall location of phase two and phase, or phase one and two is what you see under land development. That which is in green is the additional of 22 acres of the total site's about 43 acres. So we have lots of open spaces, significant pedestrian uses. And then the amenity that we have here is really our, our, our
Fitness park.
Which is a wonderful fitness park that connects all the way from Green Lane all the way out to Seminole Pratt Whitney. Went over there this evening just to drive by and see the progress and there were lots of people out there jogging and kids. Golf carts parked in the golf cart parking, so really, really exciting. So this has the pocket parks, just like we do in almost all of our communities. And lots of these wonderful pedestrian uses that run in between each block of townhomes.
What about visitor parking?
We have visitor parking scattered throughout the community, so it's parked so that every unit has two cars. Uh, two cars parked in their, in their, in their garage, two cars in their driveway. And then up and down the main spine road, we have additional visitor parking provided all the way at each block. We have, have additional three on both sides.
Do you feel it's adequate?
Yeah, it's, and actually I do feel it's adequate and it exceeds the minimum code requirement.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments from council?
Oh, is it a gated community?
Yes, this is gated. It will have another entrance. So there's the existing main entrance off of Ilex. There'll be another kind of a second main entrance off of the roundabout there at the end of Water's Edge. And these will have arm gates going into them. So they're not the, the swing gates, but they're arm gates, but they are all gated, sir.
Arm gates, well. Any other questions or comments from the council?
I'm excited. We have affordable housing that's selling so well. We need to add more.
I agree.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2024 dash 23.
Second.
Resolution by title only, a resolution, City Council, City of Westlake, Florida, approving the plat of terrace, Westlake Phase Three. Being replata of portion of track A, portion of open space track number seven, all of open space track number eight, of tracks B6, B7. And all lots 202 through 226, terraces of Westlake. Phase two, according to the plat, there is recorded in Plat Book 137, pages 97 through 101 inclusive. Also being a replata of portion of track A, Westlake Pod I and Pod J. According to the plat, there is recorded in Plat Book 130, pages 153, 154 inclusive. Both of the public record of Palm Beach County, Florida, line in section 12, Township 49, 43 South. Range 40 East, East of West, City of Wesley, Palm Beach County, Florida, providing for recordation, conflict, severability and effective date.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Langowski, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. I'll see you in December. Happy Thanksgiving to all of you.
Thanks.
Same to you.
Happy Thanksgiving as well. Moving on to new business, there currently remain three vacant positions on the Arts in Public Places Advisory Board. Which consists of one regular member. which consists of one regular member seat and two alternate and one student member. I just wanna say that this committee is moving a little slow right now, but it will heat up drastically and all at the same time. So if you wanna be involved with an exciting committee, Arts in Public Places will be where it is at. We are going to have a discussion to appoint Kim Lanza as a regular advisory board member. I believe she was the only applicant. Do we have any comments or discussion from the council?
Based on her resume, she's a very well-qualified applicant, and I'd be excited to see her participating in our Arts in Public Places.
I concur with that notion. Any other comments?
I'll make a motion to appoint Kim Lanza to as a regular member of the Arts in Public Places Advisory Board.
Second.
Motion by Vice Merlingowski, seconded by Councilman Warner. Roll call, Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Resolution by title only, a resolution, city council, city of Westlake, Florida, appoint one member to serve on the Arts in Public Places Advisory Board, provide for conflict, severability, and effective date.
Excellent.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Now.
Respectfully.
Now may entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Martinez, seconded by Vice Merlingowski. Roll call, Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Congratulations to Ms. Lanza. Yay. City council comments, Councilwoman Leonard.
Thanksgiving to everyone, and I think that's it, I don't have any other comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilman Martinez.
Also, happy Thanksgiving, and we have the Westlake Five K quickly approaching, January twenty-fifth. So those that haven't signed up yet, sign up, invite your friends, family, it's gonna be a great time and for a great cause. That brings me to a question, if we have any updates? Awesome, I'll hand it over to Greg when it's his turn.
Councilman Warner.
Thank you, I wanna say happy Thanksgiving to everyone, happy Veterans Day. Thank you to the Wellington Garden Club for their presentation tonight. I would like to see our pavers in the crosswalk codified, and I'd like to see if the council would support putting that on the agenda for future review, so we don't have to overcome any precedents that have been set.
I mean, I think it sounds like a great idea, if, if we wanna hold a standard, why not get, why not get rid of any possibility of there being any human error and just make it, make it happen moving forward?
I understand, I'm okay with directing that to staff.
We'll find the appropriate section of the LDRs to put it in.
Very successful.
Certainly simplifies everything.
And now, as a clarification on that, the major concern is all crosswalks are mostly the ones that are on the perimeter that lead in off of the main streets.
Give us the options. Come back with some recommendations.
Yeah, come back with those.
Perfect, thank you.
Great, Megan.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay, two things, one is the education advisory board met last week on Thursday, and coming on the December agenda, we would like to present a check to Golden Grove Elementary School's principal, Linda Edgcombe, for the two thousand fourteen dollars and two cents.
That's amazing, it's great, yeah.
It'll be used.
I like that.
For access equipment that they purchased, so we will present them with the check.
Is, is she gonna be, will she be here, will we do an event at the school? She'll come here and we'll present it for council?
Yes, and staff has already ordered a check, so we can do.
Oh, fun, so, yeah, that's great.
Whatever date we decide in December, we'll figure that out.
Second thing, let me just interrupt for a second, I'd like to, doesn't have to be a motion, but I would like Councilman Martinez to be the one who presents.
I would love that.
The check, considering it's his, it's his baby, in lieu of me, I would like.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
We're also gonna invite the advisory board to be able to meet here.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
And then the next item is the city park. I have already spoken with staff, but after next Tuesday, we're gonna have new members of our state legislature delegation.
Yep.
I've already asked Ken to come up with an idea that we can present, because in the month of November and December is when they actually, we actually meet with our legislators, and I will actually come with a plan, you know, if we're asking for a million this year, two million. So we're part of the pot also that has money received from the state.
We need it a hundred thousand percent, definitely.
Is that a workshop we would do, tell them with, not just staff comes up with the plan? Okay.
Right, but we need staff to give us something to present.
Well, I have the numbers for you.
Okay.
There'll be a generalized plan so they can see like a roundabout, or works, and they come with a small ass, and that could be a million, two million, three million.
Yep.
And then we can come back every year and ask, because so many of our municipalities get huge checks, and this is our one and only park.
We're gonna make it happen.
We have the ability to get something.
Yeah, and we can't afford it on our own, so. Excellent, I have a couple comments, one being the Westlake Holiday Market is scheduled for, Madam Clerk, what's that date?
December eighth.
December eighth, we have our holiday pop-up market, we close down King Fisher, lots of vendors, and it's a lot of fun. Second thing I wanna say is the reason that we're having this meeting on Friday and not our regular Tuesday, and having to listen to this wonderful Westlake party out there, is because this very room that we're sitting in will become a voting location, an actual polling place, and please, please, please exercise democracy, and if you haven't already, go vote, and you can do so right here in this very room where we stand. And that will be the first time that this becomes a, a polling location. So, just wanna urge all of our citizens, please, please, exercise your, your given right to go vote, because it's so incredibly important. And aside from that, just thank all my colleagues for their leadership, I think these meetings are, are great, and thank you for all the public participation, and I will adjourn at seven thirty-eight PM. Oh, we have reports, I'm sorry, I didn't adjourn, takes my adjourn back. Staff reports. We have staff reports, let's start with our city attorney.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. City manager.
Happy Thanksgiving, and we're towards the end of the year, we're the first month into our new fiscal year, so moving forward.
You have no other updates and nothing you wanna talk about?
Um, nothing that's ready for the public at this point in time. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, we do have to change our December council meeting date.
Yep.
We'll need to move it back one week to December tenth. Yes, it would have been a third, and part of it is you all are.
We're all gonna be in Tallahassee and stuff, or Orlando.
I don't know, you all come and go so much, I'm not sure where you are.
All gonna be at policy committee meetings for the Florida League.
So.
I've already checked, I'm okay with that date.
I'm good with that.
Anybody else ready?
The tenth, we said?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, well, we will have a quorum.
Cork will make the necessary advertisements and move it to the tenth.
Nothing else you wanna comment on, Mr. City Manager?
The, you may have seen it or heard it in different locations, the county is moving forward with working on an RFP for a comprehensive master plan for transportation for the county. It is in a process, it'll be coming out soon, when it hits the street, as it becomes to hit the street, you all will get a summary, and also we'll be bringing a resolution of support for working together. As a side note, this is one of the first times in the county's history that the county and all thirty-nine municipalities are working together on one subject, so that there's a county-wide attack on this, because all of us understand interrelated, we're never gonna pave our way out of this. People are here, transportation growth is here, we've gotta find better ways and better locations. So it's, it's very encouraging to see.
Encouraging to see all the stakeholders come together.
Yes.
Do we have anything from police or fire?
The written reports are in your, in your package, other than that, they had to bail already.
Public comments, this section of the agenda allows for comments from the public to speak. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes to comment. A public card should have been committed, completed and returned to the city clerk. When you're called, please come to the podium, state your address for the record. You got three minutes.
Probably for four or five months about transportation, and every month you told me we had a parking ride. It's a county thing, there was never an answer given, I knew that we needed it, I knew business wouldn't come in without it. I'm very happy that I found out that you were in negotiations, so I'm glad I kinda knew about it. And I do agree with Mr. Warner with what went on today, that we need a president, residence, and to keep these pavers and not make that mistake and make sure that, you know, we keep everything good and uniform here.
Excellent, sir, okay, thank you, sir.
Mayor, you had a public comment from Aaron Hawkins, I don't know if he's in the lobby or if he wanted to still speak.
Well, if he's not present, unless somebody wants to grab him real quick? You think he could hear me if I scream into the mic? Mr. Hawkins? No?
There he is.
Ah.
I wanna thank everyone on behalf of my fiancee, Kim Lanza, who you just put.
Oh, fantastic.
I don't know how she didn't know about this, I don't have my phone, I really didn't wanna tell her, but as soon as I get back and tell her she was really over the moon about it, I am her representative.
Thank you to Ms. Lanza. Bless you. Mr. Hawkins? How are you, sir? Yeah, just get your name and address for the record, please. You can grab the mic, it's fine.
It's just easier, a little taller. My name's Aaron Hawkins, I live at sixteen sixteen Southeast of Rappahoe, that is not here in Westlake, that's in Stewart, actually. The reason I'm out here tonight with you guys is there's a real chance that I could be your next state senate representative. I'm one of your candidates on the ballot, I've been going around to each of the municipalities to talk with the local government and introduce myself to the community, to let people know that they will have access to me, and that there is a voice in my office for every town and city and local government that is in my district. You will be heard, and you will have a avatar in the state legislature working for you, no matter what size you are, or how new you are, or anything like that. I'm twenty-six years old, I currently run my own business, it's an entertainment company. I've got a background as a policy analyst, though, so I've got a bachelor's in economics, master's in international affairs. Both of those degrees are focused on economic development, so I'm trained as a policy analyst. I've got a professional background in real estate, where I worked as an appraiser for three years and a data manager, so I've got experience in data science and business and organizational management. Like I said, I just wanted to come out here today, introduce myself to you guys, introduce myself to the lovely people in the audience, and make it known who I am, so you know, people can put a face to the name. And I just wanna say I'm so happy you told people to go vote November fifth, make sure your voice is heard. It's the one time they have to listen to you. And I'm also just happy that you all said happy Thanksgiving, it feels like after Halloween, people just skip to Christmas. But yeah, so that's the gist of who I am, I'm a Stewart native, born and raised in Stewart, Florida. My family's been in Stewart since nineteen twenty-three, been on the Treasure Coast since the eighteen nineties. I just wanna see us better represented in our state government. I currently serve on the Stewart Community Redevelopment Board as an advisory to the, to the city commission of Stewart, and I serve with several nonprofits in Martin County focused on economic vitality and the preservation of history. So, that's just, again, just who I am, my name's Aaron Hawkins, I'm one of your state senate candidates. I'll be here to the end of the meeting, feel free to pull me aside, ask me some questions, whatever you wanna know, I'm an open book. And go vote, early voting started in Sunday, I think, here in Palm Beach, and make sure you get out there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Do we have any more public comments?
No, Mayor.
There being no further business, I will actually adjourn at seven forty-five PM. Meeting adjourned.